Good afternoon. We're, it's 6 o'clock and we're at Nashua High School North for the Human Resources meeting. Today in your packet you will see two things that's on the agenda. It's personnel recommendation and policy GBCD. So, we want to go over the personnel recommendations. Do I have any questions on the personnel? Oh, can we have a roll call please? I'm sorry.
All right. Okay. So, the meeting is called to order at 6 o'clock. We're, it's Monday, March 25th, 2019, and we're at the Nashua High School North Boardroom. So, Mrs. Timmons is here. Mrs. Porter, Mrs. Oden.
Here.
Um, Ms. O'Gara.
Here.
And Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you pull out your personnel recommendations? We have six items on our personnel recommendations. Any questions regarding that? Yes, Ms. Oden?
Um, I'm looking at nomination number six and, um, I am concerned because the past practice has been that administrators do not coach. I do understand the circumstances that we haven't been able to find anybody to do this. This individual has a tremendous amount of experience with lacrosse. It is a sport that we've had some issues or trouble finding people to coach that have lots of experience in it, is my understanding. But I would like to make this an interim position based on the fact that the past practice has been administrators are not coaches. They have to step down when they become an administrator.
Um, Ms. O'Gara, can you speak on that, please?
Everything that Mrs. Oden said is correct. She is a, has a lot of experience in lacrosse and we have not been able to fill this position. And the intent of this position is it for only to be for this season, this year, and the athletic director will begin a new search for next year for this position.
Ms. Oden, does that satisfy your concern?
Well, I would like to have the word interim before it so that, rather than to say one year. And I'd also like to have the website updated so that it reflects the fact that the position is still open. And I have questions about some of the other ones, but it is, oh, I'm trying to, trying to find it here. I believe it's from last November. That it's November 20th to November 30th it was posted. And if anybody was looking, they would think that it had already closed and that it's filled. So, I think we need to update the website on that. But I would make a motion to make this an interim position, to add the word interim before varsity girls lacrosse co-coach.
You have a second on that?
Okay, second.
Okay. So, the motion is to add the nomination for Heather McCallum, interim varsity girls lacrosse co-coach, Nashua High School South from the year 2018 to 2019 school year at a salary of $1,297.50. So, just say all in favor.
Did you add the word interim?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So, do you need a second?
You seconded.
Oh, I seconded adding interim. I didn't know if we were doing a separate. We can do it all together?
We did it all together.
Okay. All right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I just say, we are very lucky to get a person of her experience because she has done an awful lot of coaching in girls lacrosse, plus she played it here in Nashua. So, I want to thank her for stepping up into this because it is time demanding. Matter of fact, just, I was coming into the meeting and she was just leaving, so it's been a long day for her. But I do want to honor the policy or the past practice that we've had, so. But thank you to her for stepping up.
Also, the 2018 to 2019 school year, that's about up, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
So, she really only would be there a few months.
Well, I think the season is just starting. Yes.
Yes. So, it's after this season, which is, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Any other personnel recommendations? Ms. Oden?
Yes. When I was looking on the website today, there were, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine positions for sports coaches posted. And I was just wondering how many of them have been filled? I'm thinking the North Athletic Coordinator, has that been filled?
I haven't. I've been, H Harafas handles the postings and I have other responsibilities. I actually, we've had a person who left and went to Sunset Heights, so that position has been vacant for a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay.
So, we are behind.
Okay. Well, could you get back to us by the night, next meeting? Looking at these dates, some were posted the end of 2018, three months ago. And if they're not filled, I think, I don't know what method you use to make sure that people understand the position's not filled.
So, usually we would extend the date, but we have so many postings out and we've been short-staffed in the office. We've had somebody that has been out sick and somebody who left to go to a school.
Okay. Okay. Well, if they could work on that, just because some of these are spring sports. I see tennis here for, and there's a JV lacrosse. Do we have a JV lacrosse coach, do you know?
I don't know, but I think, is it North Tennis? Girls?
No, it's South Boys Tennis.
I'm not sure.
They were looking for a coach and I believe it was, the posting ended on February 16th. So, I, you know, what I want to make sure, if it's not filled, if somebody is looking at what's available in Nashua, I want them to know that if they're interested in coaching tennis, that it is available.
And, I'm sorry, but the office has been short-staffed and we have not been, we have to work on priorities, getting people on board, and we have not been able to catch up with that.
Okay.
I just want to point something out, Ms. Oden. There is a job fair coming up and have that been posted yet?
Oh, that's posted and advertised everywhere, so that was a priority. We've put it in papers. We've put it on Indeed. We've put it on Monster. I've asked for it to be tweeted out. We have flyers that should be in every school building. We printed our flyers to put in the school building, so. And it's, and it's on the website. If you go to apply for a job right there, you're going to see that our job fair is April 2nd and it's for teachers.
So, if anybody out there is listening.
Yes. So, if anybody wants to, is interested in being a teacher, please come to our job fair at Nashua High North from 4:00 to 7:00 on April 2nd.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Gara, do you have any questions?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Nope.
No? So, again, can we accept the personnel recommendation dated March 25th, 2019?
Second.
Okay. Can we have consensus, like all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
In your post? So, the ayes have it and the personnel recommendations have been approved. Okay. In your packet you receive, the next thing is the GBCD, Background Investigation and Criminal Records Check. I don't know if you guys have gone through this. I'd like to have this sent to committee.
Send it to policy?
I mean, I meant policy.
Okay.
Policy Committee.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, Ms. O'Gara has gone over it and it's ready to go.
Would you like me to go through the changes?
I think you should.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm prepared to do that. So, the first change is in the first paragraph. So, we do criminal background checks on all employees, student teachers in their final year when they're doing their student teaching. The college does it when they begin the program and we do it when they come in our student teaching in our district. Or an educational intern because we do have school psych interns that come into the district or a designated volunteer. Those are the staff that have a criminal background check. In the second paragraph, it had said before that each employment applicant, student teacher or educational intern, that is not correct. The FBI only wants us to do criminal background checks on the final applicant for employment for a position. We are not authorized to do background checks. It's a violation of privacy. So, it has to be someone we are employing. Let me fix that. The rest of that paragraph, that wording appears on every single application where we ask them, there's an RSA with this exact wording, if, have you ever been arrested for or convicted of any crime that has not been null by a court? There's RSA that allows us to ask that question and it's on our employment application. We also, on our employment application, this whole second paragraph is on the application. I kept it on there and I debated whether to take it out or leave it on. But we also have a clause that if you falsify any of the information or omit it or half-tell us the truth, that we, and if that has a bearing on your hiring, we have the right to disqualify you for consideration for the position or if it's, we could discharge you if it's a big enough falsehood. The third paragraph is not correct. Not everybody pays the fee for criminal record checks. We do not charge lunch monitors. We do not charge subs, crossing guards, summer grounds. We do not charge designated volunteers. Only food service has a account and they pay for the food service subs. So, it's anybody that doesn't get, have a minimum wage or, you know, a good amount of money. I mean, substitutes are $67 a day, so we don't charge them. So, it's everybody, we would charge everybody that is an employee. And student teachers, we don't charge because we end up making them substitute teachers. So, when they come in to student teach, we're proactive now and we put them in as a sub. So, first of all, they can, if the college allows them to, sub for their cooperating teacher. And then, second, when there's a break, the December break, the December-January break or the break they finish in, end of April, May, they're already ready to sub for us. So, they end up most of the time not paying for theirs either. Uh, let's see. So, everybody, when you are hired, when you come into HR, you are going to be fingerprinted and you're going to have to fill out the form and that, the Criminal Record Information Release Form. Every single person fills that out when they're filling out their employment paper because along with the I-9 and the W-4 and all those other things. The next to the last paragraph, that's not correct. It's all employees. I had to go through a record check. I had to go through a record check at Hudson. It's all, it's not just people who come in direct contact with pupils. Dan Donovan has to have a record check. In contracted services, so we didn't, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All right. Do board members have to get this or are we exempt?
I don't believe so.
We didn't have.
Well, I know we didn't, but.
Because you're elected officials, you are not employees.
Okay.
And I make a statement, as an elected official, you've been vetted or you wouldn't have been able to run. They do that.
Okay.
They do a criminal background check as well. And because you were in the school system already, why you didn't get that?
Oh, okay. 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 Thank you.
So, this is the next section. We didn't have a section about this, but this is, happens every single day. We have contracted services. We have occupational therapists that we contract with in the district, physical therapists who perform services with our students, and first student bus company. We fingerprint, so the RSA and the technical advisory says that contractors are responsible for fingerprinting their own people, but the state allows us, because we've been fingerprinting first student bus drivers since, for years and years and years, and that's okay with the state. So, this is just stating the policy that if it is, and we do have some small bus companies that they have to do their own fingerprinting. And we, according to the technical advisory, are supposed to get a statement from them that says that what their policy is on the returns on the records. And then, the designated volunteers are okay. And the conditional unemployment, that applies to everybody who's fingerprinted. They are hired on a conditional basis. It says on the application very clearly, you're hired conditionally until we get a satisfactory background check. So, all this other wording is really not needed.
And how long does the background check come back?
It takes four to six weeks for it to come back.
So, they can be employed with children, four to six weeks before we get a background check back?
That's correct. I think so.
Ms. Oden?
Yeah. I have a question. Looking at the paragraph on contracted services, any organization with contracts with the school district to provide services such as school bus services or physical therapy, whatever? It goes on, but where would there be a place for consultants? I remember not that long ago, a couple, two or three years ago, we hired a consultant and it ended up being the paper that the individual was charged with a crime down in another state. Should we deal with that?
That person was a contracted services and we should have fingerprinted them. All contracted services, and that includes consultants. They are non-employees.
But sometimes they don't deal with individual students and it talks about that in here. So, are you saying that that person was?
It has nothing to do with meeting regularly with students or individual students. The, all contracted services that are in service to the students of the district. So, was that a consultant for us or was that a consultant on students?
It was a consultant for a school.
For administration and teachers?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Then we should have, if they were meeting regularly with students, came into, so you, the criteria that we have for designated volunteer, right? We would have followed that, that they came in direct contact with pupils on a daily basis, meet regularly with students, meet with students on a one-to-one basis or any other volunteer. We would have followed that.
No. It was a consultant doing PD at one of our schools, was paid. And then it came out in the paper that the individual had legal problems down in Massachusetts, had been let go in the position they were in, and we were paying the person as a consultant. So, is there anything in this paragraph that would deal with that?
There isn't, but you can, we can most certainly put that in if you'd like.
I think that's appropriate because I was kind of taken aback to think we were paying somebody that couldn't work in their previous job, had been let go because of some serious issues. If you could address that?
I could address that with the state police to make sure because there is a sensitivity about who we fingerprint because it is confidential information. But we, I can find that out and we can add it.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's a good idea, Ms. Oden. Ms. O'Gara?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I was going to say that what Ms. Oden is talking about is not, are not people who are directly come in contact with students. There's lots of contracted services that we have. People that do work on our buildings, people, you know, we're going to be contracting for a new school possibly. So, I don't.
So, we don't typically fingerprint?
Right.
Any of those people?
That would be a logistic nightmare because, you know.
Right.
Right. So, I think that, on the one hand, yes, we should, you know, people that do professional development and that are around our schools, definitely. But then, then there's a point where we're going to have big contracts with, you know, contracted services where it doesn't, it's just logistically impossible to do it. So, it's kind of a quandary.
I think we would probably have to have a qualifier if we were to put that language in. So, I wrote PD consultants.
Ms. Porter? Because of the PD consultants, even though they might be giving PD to the teachers, they might be doing demonstration lessons. So, a lot of those PD consultants work during the school day in the school, even though they may be directly with teachers, they can be using, you know, doing demonstration lessons. So, those people, I think even though they're a consultant, they're still with kids.
Okay. Any questions regarding contracted services? No? Okay.
And then, I guess we're on page three or four.
Okay.
We talked about conditional.
Nothing anymore.
Yeah. All that wording is, it's just everybody's hired unconditional. There's no choosing who is. They all are.
Okay.
So, the first group of, are the felonies that are listed in the state statute, RSA And those are all felonies and they're listed. There's 17 of them. So, it has always been that we are required, if it comes back and the superintendent sees that it was one of those felonies, that we have to dismiss them within 24 hours. And then, the rest of them, the superintendent, he typically, I believe he calls them in and he meets with them and makes a decision on other felonies and also misdemeanors because those misdemeanors now come back on background checks.
So, what do we do with a misdemeanor? For instance, staff, do we not hire them or how does that work?
I have no idea. The superintendent can see what the misdemeanor or the felony was and he calls them in and he must ask them questions. In the past, before, it was only the superintendent. We would look at like the time span if somebody did something crazy when they were in their youth and how long has it has passed. Or sometimes we look at the nature. We'd ask them what happened and all that. So, I imagine he probably does all of that. In the, one, two, third paragraph from the bottom, I put "or designate" because the superintendent does not fingerprint all the incoming employees. The HR department does. We fingerprint them. We collect the money. We put all the money together and then have a big check made out to the state police. We send the fingerprints into the state police.
Is it still $50?
It is not. It's $47 and there's lesser charges for volunteers and student teachers, but as I mentioned before, we don't, we don't charge them anyway.
And the state, we were charged, well, we didn't charge anybody. Everybody that was considered for employment, we paid the $50 and it was $50 then, that's why.
Yeah, it's gone down to $47.
Oh, okay. It went down. Great.
And, so I also added, when we went through that FBI audit, the only thing that we had, and it was like several years ago, the only thing that we got knocked on was that there's a brochure that everybody is supposed to have, so, because a lot of times people say I took that off my record or I didn't think that I was charged with that. And it's the process of what they can do to look at their own record because they don't get to see what comes back and what's on their record and how they can challenge it. And the FBI said that's the only thing that you are missing in the audit. And so, we have the brochure that we give everybody.
Thank you. What I'd like to do with this policy is to clean it up before we send it over to the policy committee and then bring it back to the HR committee and then vote to send it to policy. Any objection to that, Ms. Oden?
Sorry. I agree with you. I think that's the right thing to do.
Okay. Okay. So, we don't have to say all in favor. We just agreed to do that. Okay? Thanks. Well, this is going back to, back to the.
Yeah. And I'll look into the consultant.
Okay. And then we'll probably at the next meeting in April, it should be cleaned up by that time and we can do it at that point. Any other questions? Any other concerns? Okay. We have, I just want to point out, we do have interviews on the 29th of March for Principal for Penechuk. We have several candidates and we will meet with the candidates this, the 29th and then April 1st. April 1st is on a Monday.
And this week, as you may know or remember, the Assistant Principal at Fairgrounds Elementary is the interim. So, we are going to meet this week and look through the applicants. And then after that, set a date for the interviews.
Okay. And as you know, I'm closing on the 28th, but that's in the morning, so hopefully I'll be ready to meet with Ms. O'Gara in the evening. But in event that I cannot meet with Ms. O'Gara because something went wrong and I'm not available at that time, is it possible for any of you to, that's on Thursday, the 28th?
Thursday. At 3:00. I should be available if, Thursday's one of the days I should have open.
Okay. I just want to make sure we covered on Thursday.
And it's scheduled for Friday?
I can do Friday.
Okay.
Because remember you.
Yes. But it's scheduled for Friday or Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday. It's scheduled at 3:00.
Thursday and Friday.
Oh, okay.
And it's just looking at the applicants and who we're going to go forward with?
Okay.
We do that with the team.
If I did Thursday, I cannot do Friday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I'm going to do Friday and I may not be able to do Thursday.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Any other questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We adjourned at 6:30, is that 6:31?
Yep.
Sure. Okay. All right. That's it.